July meeting of USD four thirty-one to order. Roll call, all present except Jessica Bays. Agenda have one change. There will item negotiations is what item eleven?
Yeah, I believe so.
We will not have an executive session for negotiations tonight. Other than that, I think everything is correct.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to adopt the amendment as a agenda as amended. Discussion, all in favor? Posed, motion carries six to zero. Opportunity for visitors. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five consent agenda. Mr. Crowdis?
Um, the minutes have been on there for quite a while. Check registry was updated over the weekend. Cash summary, we're still in the in the transition phase from one fiscal year to a next. So the what's on there is basically what you received last week. So basically the exact same thing. And then the the activities account, I'm still playing with how to get the right report. So I all I was able to provide at this point in time was just what has taken place in terms of transactions within the activities accounts since for the last month. So so I'm still playing with how to pull those reports so that you can actually see what's in the the different activities. So I apologize for that. But other than that, so we're trying to trying to find those reports as best we can. It's a little difficult in this system.
Any questions on anything under the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six to zero. Item six, reorganization resolutions and appointments. This is a lengthy list of resolutions. I think we can probably pass them all with one motion, but there are several that we ought to mention as we go through it. So, Mr. Crowdis, do you want to hit the highlights?
Hit the highlights. Main highlight that I I believe probably would be the biggest question would be MM number forty-six lunch fees, lunch prices and and breakfast prices. And I I did go ahead and prevent provide a a chart for you because I was I was also wanting to make sure that I looked at that in comparison with what we've done in the past. It's a little bit different in that currently you can see the breakfast prices, reduced price of thirty cents and lunch price of forty cents. Those are those are dictated by the state. We don't we don't really have a say in those. Our current price for breakfast for all students is two dollars. We are proposing that we actually lower that to a dollar and ninety-five cents for all students for breakfast. Then lunch prices, two sixty for elementary, middle school and high school is two eighty-five. The proposal based on the information from OPA and the state is to go ahead and raise those a nickel or a dime apiece to two seventy and two ninety-five. Discussion that I've heard over the past years has been that there may be the there may be the desire of the board to keep those at that lower price. And I would be in support of that if the board decided to keep that. We we are setting at about two hundred and eighty-five thousand in in the lunch in the food service account. I was going to double check that. Hundred and eighty-two thousand in the food service account. That is that is over three months' worth of expenses. We we average around fifty-five thousand that we pay to OP each month. So they the state actually doesn't want us to carry any more than that. And so if you would if you would want to keep those prices the same, that would be, I think that would be justifiable. The reason the suggestion is to up those is because increases to food service, I mean six point eight percent increase to to food service this year, you know, that OPA has presented us. So there there is going to be an increase to to food service. And the state is recommending that we do the dime increase. Does that make sense? Kind of feel like I'm not explaining it very well.
No, it makes sense. I mean, I don't like the idea of increasing the fees. I don't know how anybody else feels. I mean, it seems like we've been able to stay pretty steady. But.
Now, knowing years past, the states might stay within a certain parameter. Are we okay if we?
Yeah, we're okay if we, I mean, they they want us to move to the two seven and the two ninety-five, but we do have the say-so to not jump to that if we chose not to. Or if we wanted to jump it a nickel instead of a dime. I mean, we still have that. And those recommendations are coming from the state. I would recommend that we do go ahead and increase the adult lunch price to four fifty because we we are so much lower on our lunch for adults. And we we just have never bumped that increase. And so it's been years since we've increased that one. So that's why it's a pretty significant increase.
And all our coolers and walk-ins are all in good condition.
Yeah, we're in good shape. Whenever the state or whenever the federal government COVID money was coming through, we used a lot of a lot of that to upgrade a lot of the the warmers and the, you know, a lot of the equipment that we use, so.
So what are everybody's thoughts? Need a little background. In the past, we've tried to keep that price fairly low because we're at fifty or sixty percent free and reduced lunches.
Yeah, right around fifty.
And so this price increase really doesn't affect them. It's the the other forty to fifty percent of the families that aren't in there that maintain the broader that increase in the cost. And we've chosen in the past as a district to subsidize that out of the general fund rather than do the individual family. So I can go either way with the discussion.
Yeah, and we my first year here was when they started the the free for everybody. And so when that was going on, and then the next year when it was free for everybody, we did increase a nickel each of those two years to kind of keep up with with the state average. Then because the reimbursement that we were getting was so much more than what our contract was with OPA, we were able to buy new trays, upgrade coolers, upgrade warmers, buy new serving tables. We were able to to purchase a lot of equipment because we had a a big surplus, to the point where we ended up buying the food service truck. We were we had so much surplus. Now now we've kind of leveled off, but we're still running a surplus. So I would imagine when I turn turn in my cash balance report later this week, we'll end up getting a email from the state, how are you going to pay, how are you going to spend down your excesses in food service? Because they don't they they don't want us to carry more than about three months' worth of excess, so.
The the flip side of it, the danger is if we don't increase it some this year, then next year or the year after, we may have to take a substantial jump, so. It's darned if you do and darned if you don't on those things.
Yep.
So thoughts?
I know we can't control portion size, but that's one complaint I hear a lot about. The portion sizes aren't big, so if we increase it, yeah, people are going to be even more, you know, more upset if we increase the price and.
And not increase portions.
And not increase portion sizes.
I mean, like I said, I know I know that's not possible because, you know, we have to, you know, cover that, but or, you know, people will just kids will just start bringing their own, you know, their own lunches, I guess, which I know that's happened. I don't know.
Anybody else?
I'm fine to leave it the way it is for another year if we have to just kind of see where we're at.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion? Do we need a probably ought to have a motion.
Let's do a separate motion for that one.
For that one?
Yep.
Okay, so I move to adopt the reorganization resolutions and appointments nine through forty-five as presented.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six to zero.
And then I move to leave lunch fees, breakfast, well, we're going to change the breakfast.
Change breakfast.
Decrease that by a nickel and then leave the lunch fees.
And then increase the adult.
And then increase the adults. Okay.
I hope that gets it all, Trish, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, I don't even know what, yeah.
Breakfast decrease, and I'll get you this chart.
That's what I'm saying, I don't have the chart from the meeting.
I'll get that to you. Breakfast decrease, lunch same.
And the adult meals to four fifty. Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six to zero. Was relatively painless, so. Let's move on to item seven, new business, S Q E membership.
This is just the annual membership that we are a part of. S Q E, again, they they provide advocacy services for smaller districts, our size and smaller. They are actually in a transition to be more related to rural school districts. They also provide through the legislative session and a very good update on a weekly basis. And a lot of times I'll forward that on to you if you're not already getting that. So I would recommend that we would go ahead and continue to 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 be a member of S Q E.
The fee is still the same?
I believe they're if they're not, they're.
Four hundred, I think.
Yeah, they I think they went up maybe fifty dollars. So, yeah.
I move to continue membership with schools for quality education for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to continue membership with the schools for quality education for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented. Discussion, all in favor? Posed, motion carries six to zero. Next item, classified certified handbooks.
I want to make sure that everybody has plenty of time to read these. I I tried to get them up on the on the website as fast as possible, but if you would like to table this for a month, I would understand that. No major changes to the certified handbook, no major changes to the bus driver or the substitute handbook. The classified handbook, there were some changes. Direct your attention to page, I believe it has pages, and hopefully I highlighted As the years have gone by, we've migrated the classified handbook and the classified leave to very similar to certified leave and handbook information as well. Couple of years ago, we went ahead and transitioned all of the classified staff to universal leave to give them the opportunity to have a set number of universal days based on their job description. So if they're a twelve-month employee, they get the maximum number of universal days. Secretaries are ten-month employee and then then our aides are nine-month employees. And so those are tiered out that way. With that tiering out, we also set some maximum number of of leave to accumulate. But that accumulation, they lost that leave whenever it got to that accumulated point. Now, we didn't we didn't actually drop in any of it off, so we still have record of all of that. Our recommendation or my recommendation is to go ahead and compensate our our classified employees for that time at a at a quarter percent of the employee's hourly rate to get back to the maximum number of days that is then laid out in late down below on page twenty-one. And then.
Now, are you saying a quarter of a percent or twenty-five percent?
It'd be twenty-five percent of, yeah, you're right.
A quarter wouldn't be very much.
A quarter or or twenty-five percent of the person's hourly wage. So not point two-five percent of an of an employee's hourly wage. That would then bring everybody down to that maximum cap. And then from here on out, just like we pay for our teachers' maximum days or days that are exceed the maximum, we would then pay for our employees or classified employees' days as well. They would have to be here a minimum of a year to have any of that. And then if an employee leaves, after they've been here for a year, they would be able to cash out their leave time as well. Now, I'm I'm going to say this out loud because I've had this conversation with a couple of you, I'm going to say it to everybody. That has happened in this office when people have left. So that's not fair that those people have have made that happen because, well, I was ignorant to it and people did it before I got here. And then, let's say, a custodian leaves that's been here for ten years, then they they just lose that because they didn't have access to that. Does that does that make sense? So so it is it has happened in this office. Not everybody, but it has happened on a couple of occasions. But I I also believe that it's harder and harder to find all employees, but our classified employees, and this would just give one more incentive. Hopefully, they have longevity with the classified employees as well as reward those employees that have been here for a long amount of time as well, so.
Do you have any idea how many days are built up over that ten days kind of?
I haven't heard of.
I have on my desk, but I couldn't tell you, like, I I didn't add them up this year just because I didn't pay them out.
I can get you that information.
Yeah, I have it on my table.
If we want to if we want to wait on this and approve it in August.
Well, if we can approve it now, can we take it off the last year's?
This will actually not start until next June, so it it won't actually affect anybody right now. But I can get you that information if you want to approve it, and then then you'll have that information for for future too.
I can think of two off the top of my head that are well over the cap, like, there's two off the top of my head that have excessive amount of hours in there. So, I don't remember too terrible about, but there's a couple that have been here quite a long time.
Yeah, and a lot of our, yeah, a lot of our classified employees will, they typically do use, so there not a lot of them are carrying over hardly any days whenever it comes to to classified employees.
It seems like more of our twelve-month employees do, I would say, than like, you know, aides, secretaries. I mean, I think the twelve-month employees seem to not carry as many, or we carry over more than probably the other ones do.
The only reason I asked that was back, we had the same situation with the certified staff when I first got on, and and we had built up about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar unfunded liability if everybody would have had that at one time. So we had a mechanism where we paid that out over a couple of years to so we didn't have a big hit right at the at the very start. But doesn't sound like this is that that kind of a deal, so.
No, not definitely not.
So I guess the question, do you want to approve these handbooks now or wait till next month and look at them some more?
I think the quicker we get them out, the better we are going to be. So I move you I move to accept the handbooks as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we adopt the classified certified bus driver and substitute handbooks as presented. We have a second.
I'll second.
Becky, Becky did it.
Becky did it. All right. Any other discussion? I agree, the sooner we get them out, the closer to the school, the better, so. Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six to zero.
Just be sure to change it to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, make sure that's twenty-five, yeah.
Yes.
Item C, June twenty-twenty-three, policy updates, discussion.
Okay, I want I want everybody to be aware, if you have not had a chance to read through these, at least in the summary form, you really need to take the time to do so. This is definitely going to be one that we will need to go individual. And the reason I say that is I I believe that there are policies in here that will not necessarily match up with the board and the community's values. And I just want everybody to be a hundred percent aware. So when when we do go through these to approve them, I want I this is kind of homework for you guys to make sure that you are prepared as well. I I I don't want anybody to be blindsided. There is a policy in here, and it's a lot, and I'm not I'm not going to sugarcoat it. There's a lot of of information in here. But there's there's several policies on here that match up with state statutes, which those are going to be ones that we we will most likely approve in their, you know, truest form. But there are a couple in here that or there's one in here that we actually have to have a hearing that actually it'll have to be publicized that we are going to actually approve that policy. So that's a little bit different than anything I've dealt with before. We'll need to make sure that that's publicized, very similar to how we do our hearing for, excuse me, our hearing for our our budget and our revenue neutral rate hearing. So it potentially would make sense to go ahead and do it at the same time that we do our budget hearing. That way, we have all of that publication taking place all at once. We have the budget hearing, revenue neutral rate hearing, hearing for this policy. And then that way, that way, there's, you know, we're not duplicating all of the publications that are that are coming out. So do take some time to look through this. I will try to, in some of my updates, go ahead and give you heads up on some of the policies that would potentially be issues. And then kind of give you a kind of give you a heads up as to, you know, which ones may be the ones that we need to pull out and and look at individually. So, you know, these are recommended and sent to us by K A S B. They are recommendations. They are not a hundred percent we have to do these.
With the exception of a couple of the state ones.
With a couple of them that are that are state statutes now. So, you know, the other one that that kind of comes up that is going to need to be discussed between now and January is our enrollment cap. And there's been several discussions in terms of what are districts doing for enrollment cap? How do we keep that from biting us? How do we keep it from keeping students from coming to the district if we want to have those students come to the district? A lot of superintendents that I've discussed it with have really talked about really opening that cap up and not not limiting us continuing to put that back to the local control of administrative decision and then board approval of those out-of-district students. That way, that way, we're not getting into a point where someone from outside the district is dictating whether or not we accept or not accept a student. Our our criteria that we have talked about since I've been here, that I've talked about many times with the administrative staff, is always going to be based on attendance, based on academic performance, and based on behavior. Those are the three things that we typically look at, and we put a lot of emphasis on on the attendance. Because if a student is not able to get to school on time and they're five minutes away from the school, adding another twenty minutes is not going to help anything. We feel like that we can help students whenever it comes to academic performance, but behavior, we may not need a student to come to the district from outside the district that's a behavior issue. We have a pretty good thing going, and we want it to be a privilege that students come to our district from outside. So those are the three criteria that we that I've held true to as an administrator my entire administrative career, and I think our administrators do a good job of that. So that will be discussions that we'll have between now and January as well on that.
Just a quick question. Can we vote on this in December or before that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll have a vote before that.
Okay, because I was just sitting here thinking, two or three come on, won't know any of.
There's going to be a lot to absorb, yeah.
To make a decision, they have no idea what's, you know.
Yeah, actually, that will we'll need to make sure that that gets voted on probably in December because that that out-of-district policy goes into effect in January. Or at least we have to start the steps in January, so absolutely.
I just got to think about the new ones coming on, but kind of a disadvantage of not having a vote.
Yeah, drinking out of a water fountain at that point, so, yeah, absolutely.
So with that, we'll consider that the the first reading of the, or do we have to do, or wait till next month to do the?
Let's do let's do the first reading in August, and then September can be our, then we'll public we'll publicize. Yeah, that sounds like a good plan.
Any other question on the policy updates? If you can't sleep at night and need to go to sleep, just start reading those. I've tried about three times and haven't made it through, so. Item D, review Acacia policy in accordance with S B one thirteen.
So Senate Bill one thirteen basically allowed any student that is homeschooled, that resides within our district, to be able to participate in any of our Acacia-sponsored activities. Now, Acacia is in the process of getting more information out. There's, I think, later this week, there are seminars and and webinars that that are are going to be. that, that are, are going to be, um, held. But if a student is part of a homeschool and chooses to come be a part of our, um, let's just, let's just use football, okay? They still have to meet all of the same requirements as any of our students. Now, that includes academic eligibility for the past semester, academic eligibility for the current semester. That's one that is really gray, but they also need to have all of the proper physicals, concussion, heat acclimation, um, parent participation in, um, team meetings, submission of immunization records, participation fees if those are charged to any of our students, and any of the other requirements that we've set forth. Now, it goes against our actual policy, but this was passed into law. Um, so, um, you know, the thing about it is, is we, we can require them to make sure they show us academic eligibility. Now, a lot of people are still up in the air as to how far we can push that. But I just want everybody to be aware that if some student shows up and we can verify that they, they live in our district and they meet all of the same requirements that our students, then they can participate in our Acacia sponsored activities. So that, that is now state statute, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
If you don't have an order here, would they still fall under our random drug policy?
They, they potentially would fall under our random drug policy because our students are required to be a part of that. So, but if the parent does not sign off that they are a part of that, then they are no longer eligible to be our participant.
So what about our rule of being in the building?
That, that goes against that policy, yeah. Which, that is one of those policies that is in, um, that list of policies that S B one thirteen basically took away local control of.
Mr. Craft, that's kind of near ballpark, what are your thoughts?
We, we've actually got a, uh, A D Acacia meeting on the twenty-fifth, so I'll give more information after that. But I know one thing that some schools have talked about is some schools have a requirement for students have to take X amount of classes. Uh, so like some students may take two classes in the morning, then they go to a O-Tech in the afternoon or, you know, or, you know, potentially a kid could take up classes here and then go to Barton for the rest of the day and then come back and play sports. So, you know, that was one thing that was asked to Mr. Faffler of Acacia was, you know, if a school has a policy, a student has to be enrolled in at least two classes in your building, then that could technically require a homeschool kid, they have to take two classes in your building to play sports. So, you know, once again, that's a gray area, and I'm hoping on the twenty-fifth, I'll get more, more information on how that's, how that'll all work, but.
And that's basically what our policy is, that they have to attend. I don't know, it's quite a half a day, but certain amount of periods.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, how far you can stretch that.
Yeah.
With the law that they passed, I don't, I don't know, I mean, that's the fight between Acacia and the, you know, and our legislative.
Yeah, and we, we had this come up whenever we were in COVID, when we were doing remote learning and, and those types of things. So I'll review that policy and get it, uh, get a summary of that to you guys as well. Um, just so you have that available as well. Um, you know, facetiously or not, or talking about the different scenarios that may come up, um, you know, superintendent conversations and even administrative conversations, you know, if a student is ineligible, let's say they're, they're, they're in our classes right now, going to school full-time, you know, a student is ineligible. Um, you know, star football player is ineligible. What happens if all of a sudden they start the Patrick Crowdest homeschool? And, you know, that student goes to that homeschool now, now all of a sudden technically because they reside within our district, they should be able to participate in our activities. Um, well, that comes back to those academics. Some of us have even talked about that would then fall under the transfer rule because they've changed schools, but there's no bona fide move. So there's, there's lots of scenarios out there that, because then it would be the losing school that would determine, um, academic, uh, eligibility at a transfer. Um, so, so I mean, there's, there's lots of what ifs, um, because, because that's what happens is you, you know, the legislature passes these laws and then all of a sudden all of the real comes out and, uh, nobody's ever thought about that. Um, and, you know, to be perfectly transparent, when you get west of Topeka, the transfer rule gets a lot grayer than if you're east of Topeka. So I, I'm just being honest, I mean, it's not, I mean, I'm not the first to say it and I won't be the last, so, so.
If, if you would, Mr. Craft, next month, give us an update on this, since you're going to be getting some trainings in that. That way we get a, you know, we may not have any students.
Right, it may not, it may not affect us.
It may not happen, we may have a bunch, so.
Right, so.
So would they be held to the same reporting criteria then to the, as far as the grades go? Because you guys know ahead of time, like, if they're ineligible or not, so they would.
Trust, well, those, the homeschool parents, whoever, we will mandate that they give us weekly updates on Monday mornings. That's when we run our report.
And we just have to trust that they're telling us the right stuff, that's, that's the really gray area, I'm sure I like.
Is, is can we, can we make them use an accredited program for their homeschooling for academic eligibility issues? Um, I know that's one thing a lot of A D's are asking about, maybe going to twenty-fifth is, as a school, can we have a policy that if you're a homeschool kid, fine, but it has to be an accredited program?
Yeah, because otherwise you're putting a lot of faith in the reporters.
And then, you know.
Exactly.
Um, you hope people would be better than that, but, you know, like Mr. Craft said, it's a stud athlete.
Right.
That was one of the big things that was brought up is this could be a, especially the farther east you get, it could be a storm.
All right, we'll discuss it again next month then, so. Move on to the next item E, separate drug testing policy handbook for student activities.
That's Mr. Craft.
Mr. Craft, and we'll come up and give us your thoughts.
Does everybody have a copy of it?
Okay.
Um, so, Mr. Mason, we've been talking about this all year and, and I didn't, I didn't do all this when we did the other handbook updates because I wanted to make sure that the new stuff and, uh, and the high school handbook got approved before we moved on to some of this stuff, so. Um, the random drug testing policy was in effect way before me, and it's been in our, our athletic handbook. But in my two years, we've had several incidences where, you know, we've had to use this policy. Um, kids testing positive and, and, you know, we always, always make the habit of calling parents after, after they've had the, their kids have had the random drug tests be done. And I had a mother that, and she wasn't upset with me last year, was, I didn't know anything about this. And I'm like, well, technically it is on our online enrollment when you check that box that you've read all, all handbooks and policies and everything, which, you know, I'm a parent too, and holy cow, the amount of time it'd take me to read every handbook for, for all three of my kids is, is astronomical. So, you know, we don't want this to be an I got you policy. So what I did is, is, is we, Mr. Mason and I, we've seen several other schools in our league, they have just a separate policy. And there's actually a parent consent form on the backside that they got to fill out and sign. Um, and then we would keep on file in the office. We just want to be more transparent, we don't want it to be hidden. Um, so, you know, when our, when we get the new athletic packets put together, um, this will be part of it, along with physical form, concussion form, um, you know, your, your parent consent, all that stuff. This will be a part of it, that way, you know, every parent knows that, you know, if my kid is a part of any Acacia sponsored activity, um, now that includes activities and sports, um, they're subject to this. And then if, if they refuse to sign it, then their kids don't participate. Um, you know, that's, that's actually been in the policy, you know, way before me. So, you know, some other things in there, we've went away from the urine testing. Um, it's all the mouth swab now, got a lady that comes in, does it, she's awesome. She comes in, knocks it out real fast, fills all the paperwork out. It takes all the stress away from Joel and I and our school nurse, you know, doing urine samples was nerve wracking thing, so. Um, you know, that's all in here, that's all been updated, um, it's all mouth swab. So, you know, really past that, I mean, that's it. We, we did rewrite it, um, I rewrote it, tried to make it a little cleaner, a little more, um, explain itself a little better, Mr. Mason went through it and, and Mr. Kraus went through it as well, um, after I was completed, so. That's, that's pretty much it. Um, consequences haven't changed, you know, those are still the same as what they've always been. So, like I said, I just wanted us to be more transparent and just have it out there, be open. You know, I mean, granted, you could lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I mean, there's going to be somebody that's going to say they, they didn't see it, but, um, anyways.
Random testing, random testing for students not involved in any activity?
We just do for the Acacia kids.
Parents could volunteer their kids in.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But, but there's no, you can't require every student to test, only.
Yeah.
The extracurricular activities or those type of things.
Yeah, and that's explained in here according to state law that, you know, because they're in extracurriculars, we have the right to, to require this.
Uh, I'd like to thank you for going through and revising that. When that was originally written, we were one of the early schools to adopt that, so there's been lots of changes since when we've initially adopted that. We tweaked it a little bit through the years, but a major review is welcome.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Craft?
I move to adopt the drug testing as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion?
Tracy.
And, and this is just high school, there's not middle school.
Correct, just high school.
And the other discussion, not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Uh, update on student act, thank you, Mr. Craft, update on student activities handbook while you're here.
Anybody have questions or you want to go through the changes on there? I can go, there's not very many, I can go through them real quick if you want me to.
Why don't you run through the change directly?
Um, attendance, um, one thing Mr. Mason and I talked about, our rule's always been you had to be at school by noon to participate in practice, extracurriculars after school. Um, with the way our timeframe goes at school, I mean, at noon, that's, you're, you don't even have to be at school half a day. So we, we wanted to change it to eleven o'clock, so a kid has to be there over half the day in order to be able to practice after school. I mean, once again, we're an academic institution before we're an athletic and activities institution, so. Um, that was something that Mr. Mason and I both believed in a lot that needed to, uh, needed to change. Um, next thing on there is the, is the, the old random drug testing policy, which it's all highlighted and crossed out, and so all those pages will come out since we have a separate policy by itself now. Um, Wednesday nights and Sunday practices, I know Mr. Kraus had talked to you guys about. If, if I have coaches ask me, then I can ask Mr. Crowdest and then he talks to you guys if he says yes. So that was a change in there unless approved by the superintendent on Wednesday night and Sunday practices, which I think we, that had been changed a while ago, it just hadn't been changed in there. Um, the next one is on eligibility, this is probably the biggest one. So our policy did state that, um, if you were in a, in a extracurricular that was a class, that you could still participate. So what we had this year, this past year is, um, Scholars Bowl, we had a student ineligible, was not able to go to regionals and compete in Scholars Bowl. Um, but yet, we had a student in debate who was academically ineligible in two classes, was able to go compete at state debate even though they were ineligible in two classes. So I, I didn't feel that's right. Um, so what we did is, is, is we knocked out the, the class part and we put in this policy, will be enforced for all school league and Acacia sponsored activities. Administration discretion can be taken into consideration. So the big one will be is like, you know, your, your band kids on pep band Friday nights, they can still go play pep band if they're eligible, if it's a grade. Um, you know, if, if a student is, um, in forensics and they got a forensic tournament and our forensic coach has given them a grade in class for going, um, if they're ineligible, they're not going. But what we're going to require is, is they just need to come up with an alternative assignment for them to get their points, since they can't go because they're ineligible. Um, once again, we're an academic institution before we're an activities and sports institution. So, um, you know, Mr. Mason and I just felt like, I mean, it, it shouldn't matter whether you're in activities or sports. I mean, you should all have to abide by the same, um, policy when it comes to eligibility. So that, any questions on, that's really the, the, the big one. Um, and like I said, we, we changed it to a, you know, just a blanket policy enforced for all school league and Acacia sponsored activities. So that'll still cover school dances, um, and things of that nature, that's really it.
Questions? Comments?
And I didn't know what the, 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 I mean, you guys could probably tell me, the board changed that policy, what's that say? Two thousand sixteen. Um, I'm assuming that was for plays and musicals and pep band and things of that nature was originally the reason that was worded that way, but like I said, I just, I didn't feel it was, it was appropriate that a kid should be able to go compete when they're failing two classes. I mean, your, your, your tennis kid can't go to a tennis meet if he's failing two classes, so. Anyways, anybody have any questions for me on those?
I move to adopt the H H S student activities handbook as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded that we adopt the H H S student activities handbook as presented. Any other discussion, not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craft.
Uh, grant acceptance.
Samantha Craft, um, uh, was given a K A E A, which I believe is a music, no, it's an art organization, I think. She was, she was, uh, given that endowment grant, and so we would just like to accept that, uh, grant on her behalf.
I move to accept the grant. Would Mr. Craft?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the K A E A endowment grant by Samantha Craft. Any discussion, all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Out of major request, turf funds from the U S D four thirty-one endowed education foundation. Background on this, when the turf was originally, uh, put in, we, we had a fundraising effort and collected considerable amount of money. Uh, the decision was made then not to apply it then, but to keep it back for replacement of the turf. Uh, it was placed in the educational foundation because even though it was a small amount of interest, some money could be earned in the foundation that couldn't be in our funds. So that's why the money went there, and, and it's for the most part, it's set in the. So, that's why the money went there and, and it's for the most part, it's set in the education foundation fund. Mr. Kraus and I talked, it's probably appropriate that we request that those funds come back. That way, we're on re- record requesting those funds. They'll pay for it. So, that's the background on that request. So, I move to request the turf fund from the USD four thirty-one Education Foundation for purpose of paying for and completing the turf and track project. Motion been made in second, and any other discussion? Not all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Out of made old bill, uh, business, uh, building needs assessment.
So, the building needs assessment has always been something that we were supposed to have done, um, throughout, uh, last year. It was actually put in the state statute. So, for the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, needs assessment, uh, there was a kind of a generic, uh, spreadsheet that, that I, that I put together with some input from the administrative team. And then, um, there was, you know, there was approval, um, whenever we approved the, um, the, the budget last year. So, there's, there's a lot more tools out there available. So, there is a proposed four thirty-one Hoysington State Assessment Review for Needs Assessment that has been attached there. Again, a lot of, a lot of very generic information. Prior to, um, the final approval, I'll, I'll attach some data from state assessments when that is set, when that data is available, um, to be able to review and look at it and then inform the board as to why certain decisions were made, um, uh, within the budgetary decision making process based on this needs assessment. So, uh, there will be, um, some steps that we'll need to follow. And we will have to do a, um, roll call vote to, um, accept the needs assessment at the same time as, um, we accept the budget. So, uh, there'll be several different things that we'll have to do, um, that we've not ever had to do before. So, as I'm, you know, so I have to get all of those things ready for that September board meeting. Publications and, and different things like that, so. And I keep referring to the September board meeting. In past years, August would typically be the budgetary board, um, meeting. We will exceed the revenue neutral rate, um, I'm a hundred percent sure of that this year. So, that's why, um, September will be that budgetary meeting. So, for those of you that have kind of been on a while, um, you know, August is usually when we approve the budget. Now that we've got the revenue neutral, um, it shifted to September.
Any questions on that? Another one that we'll need a little homework is we get a little closer to that, uh, to look through it all.
Yeah, and I'll try to pull out some things and highlight it for everybody too.
Item B, project updates.
Okay. So, the main project that most everybody is curious about is the turf and track. As we are wor- as we are speaking and throughout the past several weeks, uh, the current crew that is here is working on as much and all of the concrete work that they can do. Curbs around the track, um, and around the football field, um, the new, uh, long jump and triple jump pits. Today, they poured the majority of the new pole vault pits. They're still missing one of the metal boxes, so they weren't able to get the north pit completed. So, the concrete crew is very, very close to completing their tasks. Their last major task is the discus area and then completing the, the pole vault area. Then, uh, later this week, uh, we're looking for the turf crew to come in. That crew will begin the process of, of cutting and rolling up the turf. So, anybody that has purchased, uh, the turf, we are informing tho- them that later this week, they should be able to, um, uh, by Thursday or Friday, be able to, um, get rolls of turf that they, that they've purchased. And, and we're trying to stay in communication with them on that process. The next thing that will take place is they'll rate, they'll, they'll actually put down our new turf. That surface will be completed in plenty of time for practices to start and for us to, um, for us to, um, you know, be able to begin practices and have, uh, practices in plenty of time. We will be waiting on our, uh, new goalposts that we did have to purchase. They are on backwater, but they should be here in time for our first game. I've been told that. So, the next crew that will be coming in is the asphalt crew. They should be here the first week of August and should take them about two days to, two or three days to put the asphalt down. Whether or not they lay the rubber at the exact same time will be kind of up in the air, but we should know as we get closer to the first week of August. If they are not able to complete the rubber at that time, that should not keep us from hosting events. That surface will be, you know, the asphalt surface will be able to be walked on, um, you know, you know, i- used and then we can get the rubber surface in and put on, um, so that it's done correctly. But, um, we're still being told that will be done by the middle of August with everything. But we are also bringing in a crew to lay our asphalt, um, uh, out of Kansas City. That's a crew that they work with on a regular basis, so they're pretty confident in, in their, uh, abilities. And I've, I've heard on some other projects that asphalt crews are, are a little more difficult to come by. So, so we should be in pretty good shape in terms of having all of our surfaces ready for, um, there to be our first, you know, football games and, and activities that take place at the high school. So, any questions on that main thing that everybody seems to be wondering about? All right, the chiller at the Activity Center, that construction has begun. There'll be some updates and pictures on that. Uh, the old barrel that was the heat exchange barrel, uh, has been pulled out and, uh, they have been, uh, getting things ready to go ahead and remove the old chiller in preparation for the new chiller. That, we are anticipating it being down, the AC to be down for about ten days to two weeks. So, that is, that is actually happening right now as we, as we talk and, and, and work through that process. I went out there today and, and they had made quite a bit of progress on that. Third floor high school bathroom and all of the bathrooms at the middle school have had partitions, uh, replaced. And so, that, that project is done, uh, and completed except for hauling off the old partitions. Carpet installers have removed carpet from two rooms at the high school and removed, um, and replaced the carpet, um, in the robotics room at the middle school. So, that room is done. I went and checked that out today, this afternoon. So, we're working on two third, third floor rooms and then a conference room at the high school, still working on that. As well as after they're done with those, we're supposed to be getting the tile in the west hallway at the high school and on the elevator landings. So, those are, that's coming along, we're starting to see some progress there. Custodial crews continue to finish cleaning classrooms, shampooing floors and refinishing the wax in all of the buildings. Nita Rife has been finishing up repainting the hallways in Lincoln Elementary and has moved on to the middle school kitchen and will be working on that as we have a downtime for the kitchen. So, any questions on any of the projects that we've got going on? Did I miss anything? You might have seen a little bit of shaggy, um, yards at, at, at the schools. We did have a, uh, mechanical issue, um, on the lawnmower, but we got that back today and the boys that know are trying to get that caught back up. So, it's a good problem with the rain, so.
Any question on any of the projects? And the chiller being down at this time, there's really no camps or anything major, uh?
No, they're still, because we didn't really know when it was, so they have all, so our, our boys, little kids basketball camp is going on this week at the Activity Center because they have, um, they just have so many numbers. Uh, the girls', uh, little kids' activities camp is, uh, basketball camp is going on at the middle school. The boys' team camp, they have actually moved to the middle school, um, so, for some air. So, um, so we do have some things and weights are continuing. But the, the little kids' camp was a, was a space issue more than anything, so.
Are there fans down in the weight rooms for, for the summer weights?
Yeah, the, 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 the air movers or the fans are still going. And then we also went ahead and brought in, uh, dehumidifiers to keep the moisture down in, in there. So, so the, the fans are actually still going, um, to keep air moving throughout, you know, throughout the building. It's just, yeah.
Any other questions? Now, we'll move on to item C, continuation of substitute reimbursement.
The past couple of years or the last year, we, we put in place, um, the idea of reimbursing our substitutes for any costs to, um, see about encouraging other people to be substitutes for us. You know, I bring this up because it, it, it only states one year at a time. Didn't know if the board wanted to continue that. As we had some discussions during agenda review, uh, it really has not been a huge catalyst, um, to, um, to get people to substitute. Those that are substituting for us are going to substitute for us and it really hasn't brought in a lot of new, um, correct substitutes. I mean, it, it's a, it's a relatively low cost. Uh, it does, it does probably benefit those people that substitute for us on a more regular basis. So, just wanted to ask the board whether they want to continue that.
Refresh what, what we actually reimburse.
So, we were actually reimburse, um, basically any cost that a, that a substitute would have. Relicensing, uh, if they're a new substitute, uh, we would re- reimburse them for their, um, fingerprinting and licensing. So, basically up to about a hundred and twenty dollars of, uh, expenses and they have to substitute for us for a minimum of five days to be able to get that, um, reimbursed.
So, there has been some usage, but limited.
Limited, yep.
I would say mostly with subs renewing. I would say mostly with current subs renewing. We've had some aides that obtained their sub license and they've gotten reimbursed, but I would say most of the people that we've reimbursed have been, have already been subbing and they just renewed.
So, the question is whether to take them back or not, so. As you said, it's not a very expensive thing to, to continue.
No, I think we probably, I think last year, we probably only spent about five hundred dollars on it. I mean, even if that much.
So, thoughts?
Do we need a motion or can we just a consensus?
I think you probably need to have a motion.
Let's just have a motion.
I move to continue the reimbursement for substitute license.
Motion been made in second to continue the substitute reimbursement policy. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Item nine, reports, Mr. Kraus.
All right, I'll try to keep this short. For, uh, first thing, um, I went ahead and put on there the, um, in your packet, the Hoysington Strategic Plan, uh, single page, um, that was, um, worked on with administrative input. Dean was at that meeting, uh, Gary Seacrest and, um, Britton Hart. And you might, you'll, you'll see that there's some, um, modifications to the mission as well as the vision to kind of make those more clear and concise. And then, um, also, uh, those three areas, the community, teacher, student support, retention and recruitment and a communication and accountability. And, um, you know, under communicating or community, teacher and student support, develop a collaborative learning environment, culture and environment that fosters a healthy and thriving district community. Then develop a culture of support and encourage, encourages innovation and engagement of high quality staff. And then under communication and accountability, improve and maintain effective communication to promote awareness for support and transparency. What I would like to do is go ahead and take these things with your okay and start working on those outcomes with the administrative team, um, as well as our BLTs, uh, to bring back to you, um, you know, three to five outcomes, um, of how we're going to accomplish th- these three items. Is everybody okay with these three items and the goals? Or if you'd like more time, we, you know, we can tweak those as, as we go along. But, you know, then when we finally get to a point where we're, we're, we're satisfied and approve this, we want to get this message out as much as we can, that this is what we want to accomplish.
And, and we had discussed, uh, when we have that all finished, bringing back the group that helped develop this initially to come back and, and present it to them and let them show what we've actually a- achieved from what they started. So, uh, I know I had several of those members that helped with this say, well, you know, well, we want to make sure it was worth our time to do that and if we have a follow-up later, bring them back in to, to review it. Mr. Seacrest and, and Britton, uh, are excellent wordsmiths. We took ideas or they pulled ideas from us and then they put it in word form that if we'd all sat around, we'd still be discussing it two or three days later because of discussing how it should be worded and that's what they do, so it was really good, so. Everybody comfortable with the process we made on that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Congratulations to, uh, Hoysington High School. They've been selected as one of ninety-seven All-Star High Schools, um, through the efforts of Hope Randolph, and getting, uh, FAFSA completion, uh, which is the federal, um, student aid paperwork as well as having events to prepare students for college. Hoysington High School was selected as an All-Star, uh, high school for that. So, that was, that was a good thing. And this is their second year in a row to actually have been, um, selected as one of those. So, Ms. Hope, or Ms. Randolph is doing a phenomenal job getting our students ready to go, uh, for college preparedness. Just a reminder, um, put on your calendars that November tenth through the twelfth is the KSB convention, uh, that will be held in Wichita. It's been, it had been, last year was my first time to go back to it in several years. If you are interested and you just want to go for the day, um, you know, if you don't want to have to stay overnight or, you know, you just want to attend the actual activities and the workshop, the eleventh is that time. And, you know, I know Tracy went and, you know, took the whole experience in last year and even was our delegate because she was the only one that did go. You know, she did a great job with that. But if it's just one of those things where you'd like to drive down and then drive back, the eleventh would be well worth your time. the eleventh would be well worth your time, uh, to be able to go and attend those. So tenth through the twelfth in Wichita, um, there will be a vehicle going. I'll, I'll plan to go as well. And then, uh, back to school barbecue, tentatively we'll plan for that on Monday, August fourteenth. That coincides with past dates, uh, and that'll be at the activity center. So Monday, August fourteenth, uh, that'll be after a long day of, of getting our, our teachers back in the saddle. Date, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
And then, uh, we mentioned that at the, um, we mentioned it at the, uh, budget closing meeting, uh, the daycare groundbreaking, uh, that date has actually been moved to July twentieth. So July twentieth at ten A M. at the corner of Ninety-sixth and Tenth Street, uh, the Great Ben Economic Development and their, um, organization A B C C is going to have their daycare groundbreaking. Um, so, uh, if you are in so inclined to, to come that day for that groundbreaking, um, I would encourage you to do so.
And what time does that start?
Ten A M. And that's all I have.
Uh, other question, you talked about the, the, uh, start of school and get teachers up to speed. Are you doing any type of new teacher orientation or training?
Our plan is the, to bring in typically those, those newer teachers will bring in them the Friday, um, before, um, our new, our teachers get started. So I believe that's the eleventh. Um, so I don't have that draft or that letter going out just yet, but that'll, that'll be a project for this next week.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, item B, or any questions from Mr. Kraus? If not, legislative report?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Item C, board member report. I guess the only thing I would have is I would like to congratulate Carissa Cowan for volunteering and participating in the celebrity home showmanship at the fair yesterday. So she had a entertaining time, I think, so. For willing, willing to participate in that, she was a propper, so. It was nice to have somebody from the school be asking, willing to participate. I think she had fun.
Oh, yeah, I bet she did.
She did.
Did one of our students get recognized for artwork?
Oh, okay.
That's right.
Oh, I saw this somewhere, I'm sure.
I think it was on Facebook, yeah.
So, any other board member reports or updates? If not, we'll go to item ten, consideration of district personnel. You think fifteen minutes ought to get us?
Sure.
I move we go into executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under K O M A for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations. With Mr. Kraus present, the open meeting will return at eight thirty. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. And I think I don't really need to, you guys stay in. Okay, with that, I'll return to regular session with the following recommended motions. I move to accept the nomination of Anne Selfridge for the position of high school business teacher as presented. Motion been made seconded, all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Move to accept the nomination of Tessa Gorm for the position of high school secretary as presented. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Move to accept the nomination of.
Olivia.
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 Olivia Bailey for the position of Roosevelt aide as presented. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. I move to accept the nomination of Diane Stoss for position of Roosevelt aide as presented. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries six zero. Move to accept the nation, nomination of Corey Wagner for position of middle school football as presented. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Move to accept the na- nomination of Clayton Sargent for position of middle school football as presented. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Move to accept the nomination of Jacob Owen for position of middle school football as presented. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. And no negotiations, so I think we are done. Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Everyone has to sign these policies before you leave.
Don't leave.
Sorry.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero.